Good afternoon. I'd like to open the January 14th meeting of the Hamilton County Board of County Commissioners. And hello, Madam Commissioners.
Good afternoon.
Yes.
Good afternoon.
Yes. We'll start out like we always do with our silent prayer and then a pledge of allegiance for a few minutes. Thank you. I pledge allegiance
To the flag
to the flag
Of the United
of the United States of America.
And to the
and to the Republic
For which
stands
One nation
nation
under God
under God visible
visible with liberty
liberty and justice
for all.
Thank you. Our next order of business is approval of the minutes of the previous session. I make a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
You're muted, Jackie.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Thank you. And our next order of business is a proclamation honoring Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. And before we actually read the proclamation, I would like to allow time for our commissioners to say any words that they would like to say as it relates to Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Vice President Reese, would you like to have a few minutes for comments?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. In the times that we are living in right now, and what we saw last week, I think now more than ever, the message, the mission, the sacrifice of Dr. King is even more important today than ever before. I think it's important that as we commemorate Dr. King and his birthday and legacy, that we remember the things that he stood for. He was for public accommodation. He's for open housing. He was for affirmative action. Voting rights. He believed in God. He was a pastor. He graduated. He believed in education. He graduated from a historically black college. All of the things that he stood for are very important today. And I just want to make sure as we move forward, sometimes we begin to kind of water these things down. He did all of this in the toughest of times. He was for desegregation. He was for equal opportunity. And so as we lead in this county, as elected body, those are the values that we want. We want people to be able to have affordable housing, be able to have open housing, public accommodation. We want inclusion through, not only, he was for contract compliance. So we want to make sure with inclusion and diversity that we have contract compliance. We want affirmative action. We want to look at our workforce and make sure that it's reflective of those being able to be a participant and not be locked out. So all of those things are so true today. But we also look at how far we've come when you look at Georgia having the first African-American United States Senator who happens to be the pastor of Dr. King's church that will go into the United States Senate in such a time as this. We also understand that black and white walking together, black and the Jewish community sacrificed and many people died in these marches. And today, we have a United States First, United States Jewish gentleman from Georgia going into the United States Senate, who clerked, who was an intern or worked for Congressman John Lewis. We are still fighting these fights today for inclusion and social justice and civil rights. And so as we commemorate him, I think we honor him by doing the work, living the dream and the legacy and keeping that alive. So thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Drehouse?
Yeah, thank you. I'd like to echo those comments and add that here locally, we need to look no further than this county commission to see if progress is indeed being made. Slow progress, but progress nonetheless. And recognize too, that this celebration this year is going to look different than it has in the past because so much of what we are going to be doing will be virtual. And so while that is true, and we will adjust, and organizations have adjusted, the fact of the matter is we all, as individuals, as part of the collective community, need to take a moment on a special occasion like Martin Luther King Day and recognize the legacy and how we all play a part in honoring that legacy. No matter who we are or where we come from, we can all be part of the change. And so I just want to, I offer hope that people will take that moment. Not everyone recognizes the day the same as everybody else, but at least take a moment and honor the legacy with some prayers and thoughts for the future of this community and the nation as a whole in a very, very challenging time. Thanks for the opportunity.
Thank you. And my comments are, you know, last year I kind of, I implored the companies and agencies to look at Martin Luther King Day and to allow their staff to be off on such an important day. It's actually recognized on Monday, the 18th. And I just asked that the companies let me know individually if you have made some changes and if you're letting your staff off. And I did not get one response. I know people that are still having to use their sick time or their personal time to be able to be off. And so that's not understandable to me. And hopefully there will be more people and more companies that will look at doing that because this was such a great man. And just to borrow a quote from Dr. Martin Luther King, "The time is always right to do what is right." So hopefully by the next time we celebrate this next year, I will have all these companies calling in or writing in telling me that they have made some different decisions. So before I actually read the proclamation, I'd like to just let people know, as was mentioned earlier, with the pandemic, the celebration will be a little different, but there will be a celebration. So on Monday, the King Legacy Celebration will be virtual at 9:00 a.m. So you can actually get on the MLKCoalition.com or you can go on the Underground Freedom Center. They have the information listed. And also they're doing a little different this year. They're having the march, but they also included the Rosa Parks Bus, if you'd like to be on there with limited seating. And there is a motorcade. And all of that starts at 10:30. So if you'd like to walk, ride, or be in your car to be a little safer, you're welcome to do that. You certainly have to register to be a part of that, and that's at 10:30. And after that happens, there will be a virtual celebration, commemorative program, as they call it, at noon. And Dr. Nelson Pierce will be giving that talk. And their theme for this year is, "We will never be satisfied until justice runs deep like water." So I think that's a great thing. So I wanted everybody who's listening to know that there is a celebration coming. So lastly, almost lastly, we have a proclamation that all the commissioners, of course, have agreed on. I'm not going to read the entire proclamation, but there were so many important areas that I thought needed to be read. So I'll begin. The proclamation in honor of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Whereas Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. was born January the 15th, 1929, in Atlanta, Georgia, and was assassinated April the 4th, 1968. Whereas Dr. King grew up in the South under segregation, a policy that required Negroes to the separate facilities and whites and to attend different schools. And whereas devoted his life to the advancement of civil rights and public service. And whereas at the age of 26, Dr. King led the 381-day Montgomery Bus Boycott, which was widely regarded as the earliest protest on behalf of civil rights in the United States and set the groundwork for other actions to bring about fair treatment for Negroes. And whereas after the boycott's end, Dr. King helped found the Southern Christian Leadership Conference, a highly influential civil rights organization that worked to end segregation throughout the South. And in addition, in the spring of 1963, there was a peaceful march on Washington, a peaceful march in August of that same year during which King delivered his famous "I Have a Dream" speech. And whereas through the activism and inspirational speeches, Dr. King played a pivotal role in ending the legal segregation of Negro citizens in the United States as well as the creation of the Civil Rights Act of 1964 and the Voting Rights Act of 1965. And whereas the proponent of nonviolent protests, Dr. King received the Nobel Peace Prize in 1964 at the age of 35. And whereas Congressman John Conyers first introduced legislation for a commemorative holiday four days after Dr. King was assassinated in 1968, they became stalled and petitions endorsing the holiday containing 6 million names were submitted to Congress. Whereas Congressman Conyers and Representative Shirley Chisholm resubmitted King holiday legislation. Each subsequent legislation session, they submitted, they did not give up. That's not in the proclamation. But public pressure for the holiday mounted during the 1982 and 1983 silver rights marches in Washington. Whereas Congress passed the holiday legislation in 1983, which was then signed by President Ronald Reagan. So it was signed in 1983, and we're still, even though all the states have signed it also and agreed, still having resistance to observing it. But now, therefore be it proclaimed, that the Board of County Commissioners of Hamilton County, Ohio, does hereby recognize Monday, January 18th, 2021, as Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Holiday. So thank you, my colleagues, for getting this together and agreeing on this. So this is the least that we can do. Now lastly, what I'd like to do for those who don't know, we have a small video, a short video I want you guys to see.
This is the most important and crucial period of your lives for what you do now and what you decide now at this age may well determine which way your life shall go. And the question is whether you have a proper, a solid, and a sound blueprint. And I want to suggest some of the things that should be in your life's blueprint. Number one in your life's blueprint should be a deep belief in your own dignity, your own worth, and your own somebody-ness. Don't allow anybody to make you feel that you are nobody. Always feel that you count, always feel that you have worth, and always feel that your life has ultimate significance. Secondly, in your life's blueprint, you must have, as a basic principle, the determination to achieve excellence in your various fields of endeavor. You're going to be deciding as the days and the years unfold, what you will do in life, what your life's work will be. Once you discover what it will be set out to do it and to do it well. Be a bush if you can't be a tree. If you can't be a highway, just be a trail. If you can't be the sun, be a star. But isn't by size that you win or you fail. Be the best of whatever you are. Finally, in your life's blueprint, must be a commitment to the eternal principles of beauty, love, and justice. While life for none of us has been a crystal stair, but we must keep moving. We must keep going. If you can't fly, run. If you can't run, walk. If you can't walk, crawl, but by all means, keep moving.
Wow, such a powerful man. So thank you guys for your indulgence. That will end my presentation as it relates to the celebration. We'll move on to our agenda, public comments. Bridget, is there anyone on that has indicated they wanted to comment about any areas that are on our agenda?
I don't believe so, Commissioner.
Okay, okay. Thank you. And if they come on, just let me know. So we will go to comments and motions for our commissioners. And Vice President Reese, do you have any comments or motions?
Thank you, Madam President. I'm still getting chills from the video. I'm ready to go. I just wanted to bring out a couple of things. We should have something coming before the board shortly about the Economic Recovery Task Force. Again, we're still trying to get our technology and everything in the office, so we should be able to have that, something too, so we can get moving on that. Because I know a lot of people have been asking about it, and it's very important. Wanted also say that I was happy to join the Ohio County Commission Association. Had a call this week, and Commissioner Drehouse was on representing us. But they had the county commissioners from across the state. The governor was on, the lieutenant governor, talking about COVID-19. And I know that's something Denise has been our point person, but we all are concerned about it because obviously it affects all the citizens. And it was interesting, I want to just say that we did have, we did push back to the governor to say, hey, you know, do you have a plan? This is not a good plan. And so I just wanted to let people know that our county is, you know, pushing back and asking the hard questions. And I was just happy to get updated on it about the amount of dosage of vaccines that we're going to have to get people to be realistic about what's going to occur. I also would like to maybe recommend possibly a town hall or a public thing that we could do, having all of the commissioners on. I know we do briefings, but just now that the vaccines are out and there's so many questions, do you get the two shots? Do you get one shot? Well, you know, if I get the one, are they going to come back with the two? There are so many questions out there. So I just wanted to say that I was happy to join that call and try to, you know, catch up with what was going on. And I know the Commissioner Drehouse probably have more information on that. I do want to acknowledge Nick Crawsley. I want to thank him. He has been keeping us abreast of what's going on as it relates to the inauguration that will be coming up this week. And certainly there is some concern about safety, not only in Washington, but safety in various states. There, I think, was a rally or is a rally that's planned in Columbus, Ohio State House. But he has been on the phones with Franklin County and others, as well as the sheriff, to make sure that we are safe here. And I just want to thank him for keeping us informed every day of what's going on and being proactive to make sure that our citizens in Hamilton County are safe as well. Those are, those are the points that I wanted to bring up today. And again, just really thanking the staff for keeping us informed on this issue.
Thank you. Commissioner Drehouse?
Yeah, thank you. I just have one thing, and it is COVID-related. The mayor and myself and the hospital systems and others have all been trying to figure out a way to make it as easy as possible for people to sign up to get the vaccine. As Commissioner Reese alluded to, it's been very challenging because we have very limited doses. And so those that will become eligible next week, which are the folks in 1A and citizens that are over the age of 80, that's a very large number. And we don't have anywhere near the number of doses coming to Hamilton County to handle vaccines for all of them in the near future. And so we have to figure out a way to make sure that everyone has accessibility to get in the queue, get in line for the vaccine, and then to distribute that vaccine as quickly as we can in a collaborative way. And so we have been working on what we hope is going to be a common system for people to sign up. Other communities, to my knowledge, are not doing this. It is a big lift. The mayor actually had the idea of trying to set something up where you go to one place. And we recognize that that can be a website, but we also need some kind of hotline for those that don't have internet access or really are not very adept with the internet to get folks' information to sign up. And so we are having a press conference tomorrow at noon. This would have been part of the briefing yesterday had it been ready, but it was not ready. And we really, as much as I want to get information out, we don't want to rush it and put out partial information. So by tomorrow at noon, we're hoping to have a fairly robust message for people in the community in collaboration with our partners to say, this is the way you sign up when you become eligible for the vaccine in Hamilton County. And so it's a work in progress, but we're going to try to push out information as much as we have tomorrow and then continue to update people as we get more information and as people become eligible because that's quickly changing as well per the directive of the governor. So I just wanted to alert folks to that. Happy to work, Commissioner Reese, with your office, and Commissioner Dumas with yours as well, to set up a town hall meeting to push out more information. I think the more connection we have with the citizens, the better as we move through an exciting time, which, a time that should be very exciting because the vaccine is becoming available. It's just that we've got this challenge of not having enough of it to meet the need, right? So anyway, we're doing our best. As you know, that's a partnership with the state. But I know that you've got Health Commissioner Kesterman on today as well, and I'm sure that he can help illuminate or answer any questions about the presser tomorrow and where we sit at this time.
Thank you. And that will be, I'm going to speak about COVID-19. And yeah, and I did ask Commissioner Kesterman to come on today. I'm going to wait and hold that at the end because some people listened to the briefing. It's very informative. And so I was thinking for those who don't listen, that this could be another format, not necessarily on a regular basis. But I wanted to let our public know also that, as was mentioned earlier, that I think Commissioner Reese brought it up. We all are informed as it relates to the level of vaccinations, attacks, and protect, and all of that. We all are on the phone calls. We all are, we participate in the briefings. So we're all very ready to answer questions, but we also need additional information. I specifically wanted to thank Commissioner Drehouse for agreeing to continue the briefing because that added continuity to the board as it relates to her partnerships and the work she's already been doing in that area and not to confuse people at all with what is going on. So I want to publicly thank her for agreeing to continue to conduct the briefings. I have a few things. I was going to try to cut it down since I did the proclamation at the beginning, but I do want to say this for, I was on the eviction crisis phone conference or webinar. It says eviction crisis, is your community prepared? It was yesterday, and it was for an hour, but the information that was disseminated was remarkable about the monies that are coming down to us through the CARES Act for rental assistance and eviction services. They have specific strategies on how we need to target those areas that are so tremendously impacted that have the greatest probability of being homeless. In other words, they were saying, a lottery system is great, and everybody thinks that's fair. But if you put someone in who's paying $2,000 for rent versus somebody who's just barely able to make their rent, how fair is that? Because the probability of being homeless is the one at the lower scale of poverty and also the lower scale of income. They showed a map of the people that are most in need actually in that same redlining area historically where people were kept out of opportunities and housing. So I'm not going to go through the specific webinar, but you can get on there and look at the additional information. Eighty percent of the people that have the possibility of eviction and needing rental assistance are people of color, black and brown people. So we need to really specifically look at targeting first. And they indicate if we don't target the ones that are most in need, not the ones that have maybe, also maybe three months behind, but are they in as much need as some of the other people? I'll end it with that. But I also took an oath of office to participate in the Board of Revision, which takes a look at people who are not in agreement with their property value assessments. The treasurer, myself, and the auditor are the three main people that are part of that board. But they also have, also have community people as representatives for the commission. My office has two representatives. They are also asking if I can get two additional ones in case someone may get sick or can't make it. So I am imploring anyone who's watching that might be interested in being a part of the Board of Revision that would review property value complaints to fill out your application online. And I will certainly have my office take a look at it. And then today I was on OKI. Transportation information was so important. We will be getting 42 million for transit repair, improvements, and all of those things. We'll be working in coordination with, of course, Kentucky and Indiana to see how we want to use those monies and also competing, I'm sure, for those monies. So I thought it was very interesting. And in addition, TANK, the transportation system in Kentucky, they have revised their bus transportation, just their general transportation for their residents, and they have made some great improvements. And when SORTA, S-O-R-T-A, our group starts meeting, I'm hoping that maybe they might even have a representative from Kentucky that can maybe help them with some changes that they have made. I thought it was quite interesting. And that would be all that I have as relates to comments. But I'd like to pull Greg in. I promised him it wouldn't be very long, but specifically to talk about the vaccination process.
Can I interrupt you for one second, Madam President? Because I believe you were elected to the Board of Directors of OKI today. And so I just wanted to note that and congratulate you.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thanks.
Well, good afternoon. Yeah, good afternoon, Commissioners, and thank you for having me. I appreciate the opportunity. Our team here at Public Health continues to be fairly tired as we work our flexibility and manage both the contact tracing and now this mass vaccination campaign here in Hamilton County. So our team is really turning most of our focus right now towards vaccinating the masses. But as I've heard the commissioners all remark, it is very critical that the public remember that there remains very limited supply of vaccine currently. I want to share, before I talk about what's going to happen next week, yesterday we ran a clinic up in Sharonville at their convention center. It was a closed clinic, very specific to those in 1A. And we scheduled a whole bunch of people. We actually had 550 people show up to get vaccinated. There are only just a couple no-shows. And when you start thinking about a half of 1,000 people and only a couple no-shows, it really just shows the level of interest that there is to get this vaccine. And folks do not want to miss out there on their chance to get it. So next week, we are beginning, as well as all health departments and providers in the state of Ohio, to begin on working out Phase 1B. And the first week of Phase 1B is for those that are 80 years and older. And we found out just two days ago that Hamilton County will have about 48 providers that will receive about 8,100 doses of both Pfizer and Moderna vaccine. The providers in Hamilton County are going to be the four health departments here in Hamilton County, including Public Health, the Hamilton County Public Health, federally qualified health centers here in Hamilton County. Not all of them received it, but several of them received vaccine. 10 hospitals in Hamilton County, as well as 27 pharmacies here in Hamilton County. So we will have by the end of tonight, all of this information available on our website. As Commissioner Drehouse referenced, there will be a press conference tomorrow about a website that will direct everyone on how to register for each of the providers. That will be through the Health Collaborative. That will be happening noon tomorrow. For those that are trying to get vaccinated through Hamilton County Public Health on our website, we do have a form that's available for registering. We've had over, I think, 37,000 to 40,000 people already register on our website. Once again, just reemphasizing the level of demand. I'm continuing to ask people to be patient. For those over 80, our team is actually tirelessly calling you to make sure that you can get an appointment. We have not enough vaccine to vaccinate all of those on the call. We are randomly sorting our list and calling in order of that randomization so that it was a fair so that it was a fair, a fair chance for everyone to have equal access. So that work is happening. We have many seniors already signed up and very excited to get their vaccine. Those clinics for next week, we will be running with our partners in Forest Park. Forest Park has been very generous in offering us there. I think it's their community center. But for those that have registered, they will have directions to the location. I want to close by just once again thanking this county commission and county administration for your unprecedented support for public health. It clearly showed when we were in the first phase of this pandemic, whether it's through your testing initiative, your support for communication for the public health message, and just our continued partnership has just really been invaluable. And the last thing I'll remind everyone is, well, I know this is an exciting time because vaccine really does trigger the end of the pandemic. We are not finished yet and we must not let our guard down. There remain many metrics in Hamilton County that are very concerning. And this this includes a very high level of cases. There's over 10,000 active cases of COVID-19 right now in our community. We know hospitalizations have continued to remain high, so have intensive care unit admissions. Last week at 2:00 PM on Thursday, our county was listed as a county that is approaching purple. And none of these indicators have improved over the last week, which means at 2 o'clock today, we might receive kind of a wake-up call that we are in the middle of this pandemic still. So I'm excited for vaccine. I look forward to the day that the entire community can be vaccinated. But until then, please help me get the message out that our community must continue to work together to mask social distance and wash our hands so that we can finish this pandemic as strong as possible. I'll stop there and I am more than happy to take any questions from from the Commissions.
Commissioner Kesterman, as we move into Level 1B, we have not completed 1A. So how do how do we do that with the vaccines that are coming in?
So the state of Ohio has asked Public Health and all providers to continue to vaccinate those in 1A. It will get a little more difficult because we now have another group that is going to get a lot of vaccine. I can share with you that our office has scheduled 300 appointments for next week for 1A and we will continue to do that work. And so I estimate that we have between 5,000 and 6,000 more individuals in 1A that need vaccinated. And we consider each of them an important person and we want to make sure that they have their chance.
Great, great. Commissioners, do you have any questions or comments?
I do have a comment. I just want to thank Health Commissioner Kesterman. Yesterday, we had a great meeting and brought me up to speed on not only COVID, but the structure and our relationship with Hamilton County Board of Health. I do want to just take one step back because sometimes we we say 1A, 1B to those who may be watching. Could you go over what is 1A? 1B obviously is 80-year-olds. And then my second question, if you could, it has been said that you need two shots. So when you say 8,100 doses that we're receiving, is that going to service 8,100 people? Or are we talking 4,000 and holding the second shot back? I know we talked about this, but I want people who are watching at home to be able to understand that. If they get one shot, you know, what what do they do as it relates to the second shot?
Wonderful. Thank you for that question. It is an important one that I don't think is often shared publicly or discussed publicly. But those 8,100 doses are for 8,100 people. They will have a second dose still available and they'll be expected to come back and get that. Many of the folks next week that will get vaccine are getting Pfizer vaccine. If they get Pfizer vaccine, their second dose would be 21 days after the first. If they're getting Moderna vaccine, they would come back 28 days later. To clarify on the on the tiers, Phase 1A is really anybody in healthcare that is facing facing patients. So we're talking about hospital workers, including doctors and nurses and those managing the cleaning in the rooms where they're actually in interaction with COVID, COVID-19. This includes our EMS workers that bring patients to the hospital and are putting themselves at risk as well as home healthcare specialists and others that work directly with patients. In addition, 1A includes those living and working in congregate care or more commonly referred to as nursing homes. The majority of the nursing homes, though, are being managed through the federal program and CVS and Walgreens are vaccinating them. Phase 1B, as you mentioned, or as I mentioned, and we both mentioned, is 80-year-olds for next week. And then the state actually tiers that down each week thereafter. We will see 80-year-olds. The following week, we'll see some 75-year-olds while we're still working on the 80-year-olds and 1A. And then we'll continue five years younger until we get to 65. On February 1st in Phase 1A, we will begin the work of vaccinating those individuals that are adults working in schools. So with the current level of vaccine, there is, you know, the more people that are eligible, it will put more stress on the desire to get that vaccine. The Governor indicated that he's working really hard to continue to free up vaccine. But the public, including those in 1A and 1B, just need to realize we're doing the best we can to make sure that we get it out, but there remains limited amounts.
Thank you, Health Commissioner. And I just want to thank you for your work and everyone who's working on this and also indicate that this is dictated by the Governor in terms of how we roll it out. We don't have discretion. And I know that it seems like we're going to get more people eligible and it's just going to be very tough. So I just want to let people know that, what we're dealing with. So thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Commissioner Drehouse?
I have no questions other than to just thank Greg for being, or the Commissioner for being here and all his good work and the work of his team.
Absolutely. Thank you. Okay, I want to thank you, Commissioner Aluto. Administrator Jeff Aluto.
You just gave me a promotion. No, thank you. Thank you, Madam President. Just a quick comment, just echoing the the words of Health Commissioner Kesterman. I just want to say internally, from the from the workforce perspective, we continue to send the message that this is not the time to to let down the guard internally on this. We sent a message to the workforce under the Board last week, encouraging the workforce to continue to do all those things that we've done over the past year in terms of avoiding in-person meetings wherever possible, socially distancing when possible, practicing good hand hygiene always. And we also extended the time period by which Board departments will be under a remote work environment through June 1, and hoping we can revisit at that time, but at the same time, recognizing that we may need to go further than that, just depending upon what the extent of of vaccine distribution is. But we do continue to see anecdotally additional cases of COVID hitting our workforce like every other workforce. And we just don't want to let our guard down and make sure that our employees and the public that we deal with in these in our buildings remain as safe as possible. So with that, Commissioners, only one by leave item today. And this spurs from the staff meeting on Tuesday. You might recall and I believe Mr. Dickerson is is on the line. But you may recall that we had the Cardinal Land Conservancy on on Tuesday related to a Clean Ohio Conservation Fund grant. So as by leave, item one on your agenda, you have a resolution supporting participation in the 2021 Clean Ohio Conservation Fund N-RAC 2 application, round number 15, for the Besseman Woods Nature Preserve Project in the East End in the city of Cincinnati, Hamilton County, Ohio. I think the Board received an update on this previously. The administration does recommend approval. And I believe Mr. Dickerson is on if there are any questions.
Thank you, Jeff. Mr. Dickerson, did you have anything you'd like to say before we look at the resolution?
Yeah, sorry that that East End part might might have been an anomaly from when I visited you in the past. It's in Springfield Township.
That's right. It's Springfield Township. That was made very clear in the in the presentation on on Tuesday.
Okay, thank you. You already read the resolution, Jeff. I was going to ask Michael Friedman, can we just make a motion from the resolution being read? But I'll read it as President. There needs to be a motion to amend amend or change that ECN to Springfield Township. Can I have a motion to change the location of East End to Springfield Township on our resolution? Is there a second?
Second.
I'm mute. I was muted.
Okay, yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Thank you.
Now you're going to adopt the motion as amended.
So let's move to adopt the motion as amended. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Samara Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Thank you. And I'll read the resolution just for everyone so they can hear it. Resolution supporting participation in the 2021 Clean Ohio Conservation Fund N-RAC 2, application round number 15, for the Besseman Woods Nature Preserve Project, which is 26 acres in the Springfield Township of City of Cincinnati, Hamilton County, Ohio. Is there a second?
Second.
I think you've already adopted that as amended. I think you're good. You adopted your amended resolution. You're good.
Okay, but I didn't read the, so we don't have to adopt the.
All right, all right, go ahead. So Commissioner, is there a second? Did you second?
I seconded, yes.
Commissioner Samara Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Drehouse?
Yes.
Okay, we got through that. Thank you, Andy.
Thank you.
I remember you you are, you didn't claim not feeling well, but you look well. You're doing okay?
Well, yeah, just a little coughing. So I get tested tomorrow, so.
Okay, very good.
Thank you.
All right, we'll we'll be thinking about you. Okay, and now we have two public hearings, actually. Our first public hearing is to consider the 2021 Sidewalk Repair Replacement Program. I know Eric is on the line. Jeff, did you have anything you wanted to say before we got started on that?
No, nothing. I'll defer to the county engineer, Madam President.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Eric Beck.
Sure. Good afternoon. Thank you. If you would allow me, I'd like to just do a brief history of what the the sidewalk program is. Maybe to clarify a few things, we have some new people here that may not be aware of what it is. In 2001, the Board of County Commissioners enacted a policy regarding the repair, replacement, maintenance and construction of sidewalks along county roads. Inspections of those sidewalks are performed by the engineer's office. We do that on a six-year rotational basis. These inspections look for deterioration or damage that would cause a section of the sidewalk to be either unsafe or structurally unsound. Based on those inspections, we put a list of property owners together using tax maps. Then a notice is sent out with all the information to the property owners. The notice contains information about the program, what we're looking at. And it also lists the options that are available to the property owners to make corrections. They basically have four options for their corrections. They can do the repairs themselves. They may hire a contractor to do the repair. They can choose to be included on the county contract for sidewalk repair. And they will be billed for the work performed and they can pay that cost. They can be included on the contract for the sidewalk repair and have the cost assessed to them on their property tax bill. So those are the four options they have once we've identified them. Property owners who choose to have the county perform the work and who do not submit a payment within 60 days of billing will have that amount, the amount owed, reported to the county auditor for assessment against their property after approval by your board. A second letter then goes out notifying of the two public hearing dates and times. One is which is what we're doing today. And as far as the timing goes, the project for construction this year would have its billing closed out sometime in the fall of 2021. Then they all, then my office would bring to the Board any properties that have not been paid sometime in early 2022. And this assessment would not be seen on their taxes until probably October of 2022 at the earliest. So that that is the process that that we currently have. And the hearing today is to consider the the Board's intent to proceed with the project. I'd be glad to answer any questions. I know it's a it's a 21-page policy and I kind of summed it up in two minutes. So there may be some questions.
Right. Thanks for thanks for your summary, Eric. It sounds like we need to have another hearing after this one.
There is a hearing scheduled for, I believe it's February 11th, which is the second hearing that will close it out. And then at that point, we will determine the complete list of what property owners are eligible for assessment.
Okay, okay. And I will, before we open it up for the Commissioners, is there anyone on the line, Bridget, that looks like they may have their hand up? Because there are a lot of residence names on the on the list that we saw.
Yes, Commissioner, I do not believe there is any public comment at this time.
Okay, thank you. Vice President Reese, do you have any comments or questions?
I just have one. Obviously, with the Economic Recovery Task Force, one of the things we're trying to do is, you know, help people in these very tough times. And I know we've got a lot of programs that we do, social services programs. But, you know, when you start talking about, you know, property assessments and property taxes and then putting something on on top of there, I just was interested in the timing or if you had thought about that, Eric. Is there, I guess, there is a payment program. But, you know, I just, I'm really concerned of people, you know, losing their properties in this time that we're in right now of a pandemic and just stuff piling on them. I don't know if it's something, I know this is state law. Certainly, I want safety. It's a safety issue. We want to make sure everyone is safe. But I just wanted to know, Eric, if you had thought about anything like that or what might be available for people? Because even if you put a payment plan, we got all these payment plans, you know, and it's after a while. It's, you know, so all we're doing is deferring, but it's at some point it has to be paid. And I just.
Somebody has to pay it at some point.
Exactly. And I don't want people losing their property. I mean, that's a big.
Right, right. And and that that's, it's a very valid point. What you need to remember is, as I stated, that we're doing 1/6 of the county a year. So each year, 1/6 of the property owners that have sidewalk frontage go through this process. And if we start now, we may risk the other people from last year saying, well, what about me? Or the people next year, what about, what about me? So, you know, it's not, it's kind of a rolling process. So we can definitely look at options if 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 you have something you'd like to to look at.
Thank you.
And and I also brought up that same concern that Commissioner Reese had. And when I looked at the fact that there's an 18-month time to pay that particular penalty or that particular particular repair, I kind of leaned away from looking at a program because I actually sent Erica a program. We had a sidewalk repair in Forest Park. But and I hear what you're saying, Eric, that it kind of goes from year to year. So so not that we can't look at that for sure, Commissioner Reese, but I was thinking that, well, 18 months, it gives them a little bit more time, even if you don't, but it doesn't give you any time if you don't have the money to do it. But it's a longer, a bigger window. So I appreciate that. Commissioner Drehouse, did you have anything?
Yeah, just to follow along that line of thought. So Eric, could you help us understand what is the average cost? I know it varies from one to the next, but is there an average cost as to what people generally pay through this program?
Yes, I went back and I looked at the last couple of years. And it appears that the average parcel had about 35 square feet of sidewalk to replace at $20 a square foot. So it's in the $500 to $600 range was the average price.
Okay.
Per parcel.
Yeah, still a challenge for, you know. Appreciate that.
Right. And and, you know, they do have options of doing it themselves. If they're if they're handy homeowners, they can do it themselves, probably a lot cheaper than that. A lot of people just like the convenience of letting us manage and inspect and make sure it's done properly. One clarification I would like to make is you did receive the list of names. Those, that is not the entire pro, the entire program for this year. Those are the only the ones that could potentially be assessed. There are sidewalks in Springfield Township and Anderson Township as well. Both those townships have their own sidewalk program and the townships pay for the repairs in those two townships. So that that billing goes directly to them, so they would not be part of any assessment.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Madam President, could I add another point?
Sure.
Eric, I want you to also look at seniors. I don't know, you may already have a senior program, senior, you know, senior program. And I wouldn't be opposed to looking at, you know, last year's bill as well. I don't know if there's some type of holiday, you know how they do when you owe something, we've got a holiday that we put together. I just want us to really think creatively. I mean, six hundred dollars, people were, you know, fighting over in Washington to get people six hundred dollars to put in the economic stimulus to try to keep them afloat. So six hundred dollars and five hundred dollars is not chump change, obviously, because they fought about it up in Congress to get people that extra six hundred, that five hundred. I just want us to think, in a perfect world, yes, but we're in a different world now. And I just want to, it's kind of easier for us, because we're, you know, we're now on the payroll, and we get our, but some people are not on the payroll. We don't know what the unemployment numbers are going to be coming up. You know, people are still trying to get unemployment. We don't know what the pandemic is going to be. We hope the vaccine will do it. So there's a lot of unknown these next eighteen months. And it didn't just start now. It started last year as well. So if there are areas, and if there aren't, we can say we exhausted every single thing, and it just wasn't. But if there are areas or things we can do, I certainly hope we can, I know, I don't speak for everybody, but I'm sure all of us would like to make sure that, you know, a break is there.
Okay, thank you. So Jackie, do I close? We're having another hearing, February 11th. So do I, I need to close this hearing? Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, can I have a motion to close this hearing?
Second. Has the motion been made? I'm sorry.
A motion to close the hearing, the 2021 Sidewalk Repair Replacement Program.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Beck.
Thank you.
Okay, and then we have an additional hearing this afternoon, a hearing to consider our 2021 Action Plan, which is actually our second hearing. And so I see James popped in. So Noise, who's the head of our Planning and Development Department. James, are you going to lead the discussion, or I don't see Joy?
No, I just wanted to let you know that unfortunately, Joy Pearson cannot be at the meeting to public hearing today.
Okay.
From that point, I'm sure she would if she could be here.
Okay.
She's obviously a very knowledgeable and experienced community development and HUD team member here. And from that point, we do have a small but deep bench to help out. So today's spot hitter and our designated hitter is Emily Carnahan. And she will do an excellent job being able to fill in. And as necessary, I will, I might interject, but I'm going to turn it over to Emily. But just wanted to introduce her. Most of you have met her previously. So over to Emily for the second public hearing.
Okay, thank you, Emily.
All right, thanks, James. Thanks, commissioners. Good afternoon. Let me go ahead and share my screen. Joy, I believe, had a more in-depth presentation. Sorry, technical difficulties. Sorry about that. So Joy had a more in-depth conversation for you last week, like I mentioned. So I'm just going to go through sort of the main points. So as you all know, this is for our 2021 Annual Action Plan for our HUD entitlement grants. That's our CDBG home and ESG grants. So here is the overview of our 2021 HUD grant estimates. So basically, when we submit our annual action plan, HUD has forty-five days to approve that. And our actual 2021 grant numbers are based on the federal budget, and they have sixty days from when that was passed to give us our grant amounts. So that, we estimate to know those amounts on February 25th, but our action plan has to be submitted before then. So what we do is we base it on the flat 2020 amounts. And then we do have a caveat in the plan that all programs will be adjusted proportionally based on our ending, our final 2021 grant amount. And so you can see, they've been sort of increasing a little bit over the past years, but generally have remained pretty steady recently. So as I just meant, this is part of what I just mentioned, our grant cycle. Our HUD grant year is March 1st through February 28th. So in theory, our programs could start on March 1st if the federal budget was passed a little bit earlier. So we do end up pushing that back a little bit. And as I mentioned, we anticipating receiving our final 2021 grant amount on or around February 25th of this year. As I'm sure Joy went over last week, these are our participating jurisdictions. We have forty-one out of forty-seven that can participate. Obviously, the city has their own entitlement grant, so we cannot use our funds within the city limits. But we have forty-one of the forty-seven other communities that participate. In Milford, you can see it's sort of blocked out. They participate with Claremont County. So this is sort of a brief breakdown of our 2021 CDBG budget, which will be, is anticipated to be approximately three-point-four million dollars. The forty-one local governments can request community projects, so that'll be approximately one-point-four million dollars. We have countywide programs, such as the nonprofit countywide services in our Community and Economic Development Assistance Program, the CDAP. So that'll be approximately one-point-five. And then for planning, administration, and compliance, in addition to our many planning grants that comes out of our administration, which is approximately half a million. Our 2021 home budget is going to be approximately one-point-four-eight million. For the most part, we solicit with a home RFP for development projects. So it's affordable. Housing development can be rentals, can be single-family home ownership. We tend to get a small mix. Sometimes we also can do a down payment assistance program. And then we also have some funding for a community housing development organization, technical assistance and operating support. And our 2021 ESG budget is a little under three-hundred thousand, and all of this is awarded through the Continuum of Care, which is operated by Strategies to End Homelessness. So that's a quick rundown, and I just wanted to make sure, since this is a public hearing, the plan and the attachments are available on our website. The link is there, or if you just go to the Hamilton County Community Development website, it's under our Public Notices tab. And we can provide comments to Joy Pearson. There's her phone number and email address, and any comments can be integrated into the plan. And the next steps for the board will be approval of the action plan. And I believe we're on the agenda for next Thursday. You wouldn't have any questions?
Yeah, thank you, Emily. Just a couple of comments. I noticed on that last clip, you don't have to pull it back up, but public comments was up until the fifteenth. So I'd like to extend that date, at least until we pass it on Thursday, if we can do that.
Absolutely. Yeah, I think we just did it thirty days from when we first published it, but we can extend it through next week.
Great. And then I heard you say that forty-one of the forty-seven municipalities are participating. So the six that are not participating, are because they have their own program? Or what would you say is the reason?
No, I think that several years ago, many communities opted out of the program, and they've slowly been joining back. So I think Joy has been in, she's been in communication with at least a couple of those communities about the possibility of rejoining. And, you know, a few of those communities, as you saw on the map, are, you know, tend to be a little bit more affluent, and I think they, you know, with community development block in particular, you know, one of the eligibility criteria are helping low-mod income residents. So it, you know, some communities just benefit maybe more than others. So that's maybe one reason.
Okay.
Madam President, if I could just very briefly, because I think Joy had alluded to this a little bit in our last public hearing as well. I do want to acknowledge Joy, James, and Emily, who've done a great job bringing communities back into the fold on the program, because we, our grant size ultimately is based upon, in part, the population that we have that's participating in the consortium. So the more money, the more communities we have participating, the more money we get in the grant program. And as Joy said last week, just because a community may think, you know, we have a decent-sized general fund budget, we can do our projects on our own. We don't need CDBG dollars. There are other community, county-wide programs that we offer through this program that residents in the county are available or are eligible for. For instance, heating assistance, that type of thing. So we can't unfortunately serve in those communities unless those communities are actually a part of the program. So there's a lot of reasons to be a part of the program, and the folks in Planning and Development and Community Development have been doing a great job trying to bring communities back into the fold. We still have several who are not there, but we'll keep working on that.
Great. Okay, thank you. I'd like to open it up for Vice President Reese. Do you have any comments?
I guess my comment, thank you for the presentation. Last week was very helpful in understanding those communities. But I would have to piggyback on what Jeff said and what Joy said last week was, one of the prerequisites was to agree to fair housing. And I would hope that every municipality would agree to fair housing as we send a message in our county. And so I think that kind of startled me, that there were some that she said that was an issue for. So I hope that would be resolved. I do think it's also important to know that these are our tax dollars that we want to come back here. So basically, if you don't participate and we don't get the numbers, your tax dollars, our tax dollars, are going to some other state, some other county. You still pay the taxes, but we're not getting a return on our investment. So it's so critical for us to have an ROI if we're going to be paying taxes, that we would be able to get the money back to be able to help with projects in our municipalities. One of the things I did raise last week was the issue of a small business. I wanted to see that pot that we have for nonprofits and put a portion that would be earmarked for small storefront businesses in these neighborhoods. Because obviously, with this action plan, it does not include Cincinnati, because Cincinnati does its own ask for CBD dollars, CBDG dollars. So with that, we have these other municipalities, and there's small businesses and storefronts that we ride through. There's empty storefronts. There's people trying to stay afloat. And I thought that might be a good carve-out. If it's not a good carve-out in this, in this particular action plan, maybe it's better to have a bigger plan with the money that we have left over for CARES Act money. But I did want to put that on the table as it relates to small businesses, if it makes sense to have a portion carved out that still nonprofits could go after, but it's to help the small businesses. So that's my thought on it. Other than that, I think it's a good plan. I'm very happy that all of these municipalities are getting money, you know, that have participated, and looking forward to getting the word out, because some people who live in those municipalities sometimes say, oh, the county's not doing anything. It's only for the city of Cincinnati. And I want to make sure this vow, that this is going out to the other municipalities who certainly need these dollars and can really help their communities as well.
Okay, thank you. Would either of you like to speak to what Commissioner Reese mentioned about the small businesses? That sounds like, we'll think about it.
Sorry.
Go ahead, James.
No, I thought you were referring to the other commissioners. Sorry. So that's why I was waiting to see if they had any additional comments. So my apologies.
That's okay. I'm asking the Emily or James. Did you have any comments?
Oh, he's back.
Sorry, Emily, I thought you were going to respond there.
Yeah, absolutely. So we have a couple avenues currently. Obviously, we don't have a specific program, as Commissioner Reese was mentioning, but communities can request, like, a small business revolving loan fund amount through their community requests. Only a couple have in the past. For example, Harrison had an RLF, so that could be an avenue. And through our CDAP, the local governments do apply for that, but there is the opportunity for them to, you know, partner with another business that they want to see expand or something for that program. So we've done a few of those projects in the past. And through the nonprofit program, we have, for the first time this year, funded mortar, which Commissioner Dumas, I know you were very interested in that last year in particular, which obviously, everyone has helped, you know, entrepreneurs. So there are some opportunities within our current programs. And I didn't know if Jeff wanted to jump in.
Yeah, Madam President, if I may. So we had talked with Emily and James after the last meeting, based upon Commissioner Reese's request in particular. So I think, as Emily has indicated, there are some potential avenues for the microloan program through CDBG. What we might also suggest, though, maybe as a way of hitting this a little bit, the microloan program a little bit heavier, is to incorporate it into the CARES Act recommendation that we bring back to the board, which I think we have heard pretty consistently from all three offices, would like to prioritize a small business component. That would allow us to do a couple of things. Number one, we get rid of the, right out of the gate, we get rid of the geographic restrictions associated with the communities that are not part of the CDBG consortium. There's also, and Emily, Joy, and James would know this better than I, but whenever you're dealing with HUD grant programs, there's a host of restrictions on how the funds can be used. Most of them, most times are used as loan programs and not grant programs. We could do it as a grant program through the CARES Act. So I will defer to the board in terms of how you would like to direct this. Ultimately, the board has to approve of the action plan. And if you would like us to look more directly at it as a component of the nonprofit grant program through the CDBG program, we're happy to take a look at that. I think the dollar value, the dollar amount there is just lower. We don't have as much to play with or to work with, whereas if we funnel it through the CARES Act program, I think we can be a little bit more deliberative in terms of hitting the goals of the board. So again, happy to talk further about it and consider what the board's pleasure is on this. But we did give it some thought since the last meeting and thought that the CARES Act program, given what we have remaining, may be a better avenue for hitting that particular policy directive. So I'll turn it back to the board.
Ma'am Chair, that would be fine. If that helps, that would be fine. That would be fine. But I mean, I just wanted to have that piece going, but if we have opportunities with the CARES Act, I'm fine to defer. Other than that, I have no problem with action.
Yeah. Thank you. And of course, I'm hoping that we will unanimously support the action plan. It's a great one, as we said earlier. And certainly look at a later date at the small business options that we have, which CARES Act, as we said, would be a good option. So Commissioner Drehouse, did you have any comments as it relates to the plan?
Yeah, I have a question. Yeah, I have a question. Um, so Emily, given that these are public hearings, did we hear anything from members of the public, um, outside of these hearings regarding the plan?
Not yet. No, we've never received any comments.
Okay.
We, we do solicit comments, um, not from the, um, public residents, but, um, we do solicit input from the local governments and our current subrecipients, nonprofits. So we've heard from some of them, but not general public.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you. And at, at this point, I'd like to ask Bridget, does it look like anyone is wanting to speak to this? Anybody from the public?
Thank you, Madam, um, President. We, does not look like we have public comment at this time.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so at this point, if there are no more, more questions or comments, I would like to make a motion to close, um, the hearing to consider the twenty twenty-one action plan.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you guys very much. And so we will have it on our agenda, our next upcoming regular agenda. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we do have an executive session, but before we go to that, I'd like to have consent, uh, agenda items one through nine. Um, and I wanted to know if there are any questions or comments as it relates, um, to any of the consent items. Yes.
Uh, I do, on item number two, uh, dealing with, this is a resolution appointing two members to the Hamilton County Economic Inclusion Advisory Council.
Yes.
I just wanted to make a, a brief comment, um, on that because when people hear this, they'll, you know, say, oh my gosh, you know, I, I'm interested. And certainly, uh, the two that we are appointing, I support. Uh, but the two we're appointing today, uh, this board was, uh, this advisory council, uh, was set up in twenty seventeen. I'm just saying this to people who may be watching and, and don't know, uh, because I just learned not too long ago. Um, and there are specific organizations that have a seat on this board. Um, and so the two today will be filling the African-American Chamber of Commerce seat and the, uh, Urban League seat that are members, uh, of this board. Um, I just would like to also add, in joining the commission now, I want to make sure, um, as it relates to inclusion and economic inclusion, uh, I've done extensive work in elected office, both at, at the city and state level, and then come out of, of a, uh, African-American family-owned business that had been around for forty-plus years. I do plan, I told, uh, Jeff, I do plan to, um, make sure that, um, we are involved and we have been involved, but I don't want people to think, oh, we got, we just turned it over to an advisory group. There are some, uh, issues and things that, through our task force and others, other things that we will be bringing up. And I think that's important. Uh, I think we're, um, you all voted to have a CROSON study that we'll be taking up. This will be my third CROSON study in elected office. And I just want, this is something near and dear to, I know a lot of people are very near and dear to me because I lived it. And I just want to make sure that we have an advisory group, but we also will be setting the direction and the tone of where we go, uh, to make our county, uh, more equitable and looking forward to working with Robert Bell on that. I wanted to make sure that that, uh, was said uh, as we move forward, uh, with the group. And I thank all those who, um, from the different, uh, chambers who are participating in this uh, in, in an advisory capacity.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Drehouse?
Yeah, I'm just, uh, to piggyback on that, I was gonna highlight number two as well, um, because this, uh, advisory council is critically important to the work that we do. And they do offer recommendations to us. Um, and it just to, as a note, because I was part of setting this one up, the entities that get to appoint people to this advisory board, um, are very diverse. And, and the idea was to make sure that there is an appropriate amount of diversity on this board now and into the future. And so we were, uh, set it up in the way we did, trying to just make sure that that continues to happen as long as it exists. And we're also expanding the office, don't forget, uh, through the, um, resolution that we passed. So we've got another person coming in to help Robert Bell with this work and then make it even more robust than it is now. So, um, I think we're all excited about that work. I agree that this is an important advisory group. We, um, always take their recommendations to heart. And, uh, one of them was doing the disparity study in addition to, uh, the resolution that we passed about discrimination and racism in this county. So, um, we're, we're moving forward again. I, I say this a lot. It is, uh, it's a slow pace, um, but we have got structures in place to try to help us do the work and receive recommendations from the community. So I'm excited that we've got a couple new members coming on and look forward to continuing the work.
Thank you. And number two was an, uh, item I was gonna bring up also. Um, I actually called Robert Bell to ask him if he, uh, would like to speak to this issue today, but he had a conflict in meetings. So, but it's a very powerful, uh, Economic Inclusion Department. Uh, and that's, as was said earlier, that's what, that's another reason why we're expanded. I sat in on their council, advisory council, and they are a very powerful group. So, uh, just really excited about adding these two people on. So. Okay, um, with no other comments, uh, we have consent item. I'd like to make a motion to approve consent agenda items one through nine.
Second. Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, our next order of business, um, is an executive session. The execu- executive session pursuant to RC section one twenty-one point twenty-two, three G regarding collective bargaining. Is there a motion?
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Thank you.